Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Norwich City Council Scrutiny Committee on the 20th of July 2023. So, looking at the agenda, everybody's got a copy in front of them, and we'll first of all receive apologies for absence. Thank you.
We've had apologies from Councillors Viv and Vaughan Thomas, and we've got Councillor Peak subbing, apologies from Councillor Driver, and we've got Councillor Mike Sands subbing, apologies from Councillor Fox, and I think we're expecting Councillor Shmira to come, but he's running a little late, and apologies from Councillor Stute. I note that Councillor Padda isn't here either.
And apologies to Councillor Francis as well.
And to Councillor Francis, thank you.
Councillor, can you remember if Padda should be on that line?
Oh, yes.
We did say that, but I think.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask if there are any declarations of interest? Any declarations of interest?
I don't have to, Claire, I'm an election agent. You might need my pass.
No, that's fine, thank you. And before we move on, can we just look at the minutes of the last meeting and those who are here agree that they are correct record? Any comments? Okay, thank you very much, thank you. And so we're going to move on now to the, to item seven, which is the scrutiny committee review of the impact of the Elections Act 2022, particularly relating voter ID on Norwich City Council elections in 2023. And so, welcome to Stuart and to Tom, who are going to take us through this. We've got a very full report, which is wonderful, but you've got extras to add in, haven't you? And also, Councillor Kendrick is here as the relevant cabinet member who may be able to answer, I'm sure will be able to answer questions that we have. So, over to you, thank you.
Hello, pretty, so, yeah, so thanks for inviting us today. So, it's nice, obviously, I've done some surveys of cycling, and obviously, in the elections, like, this is good. I think what we've done today, we've just done some slides, I think, really, to go have a bit of overview around the report, as the Chair said, it was quite a long report, which I picked up on some of the points. And also, there, just to go through some additional feedback we've had actually since the report was written, and also, and I did mention it in the report, that we've had some subsequent updates from government as well around secondary legislation, so we're starting, Tom, to kind of cover that, which has happened since the publication of the reports as well. So, Tom, are you happy to do this? Awesome. So, we had a scrutiny request to consider the impact of the Elections Act 2022, particularly relating to voter ID after elections in May, and also, then, also, looking back, we can then, of course, look forward to future elections. There are a few elections coming up over the next eighteen months, various different types, so, you know, it's something important, and then we can kind of build our experience in May in terms of our plan going forward. So, to talk you a bit of kind of overview around the key points of the changes which happened in May was, you know, clearly, the one, I think, everything about was the introduction for electors to show improved form of photo ID, pollings stations. Alongside that, the introduction of voter authority certificates, which were what electors could apply for if they didn't have an approved form of ID. And also, and we do mention in the report, in part, our plans and preparations, was the improving accessibility for those with disabilities as well, which is, I think, probably less controversial in the news, but it was a really, really important part of our plan, so I did mention that in the report as well. So, yeah, quick overview, so the electoral poller went live in 2023 to issue voter policy certificates, so that essentially starts the kind of, almost starts the voter ID process off, because that's the first time that electors in the UK could apply for a voter policy certificate if they didn't have an approved form of ID. Also, what that did as well, ended up when it kicked off these communication plans up from ourselves, but also the electoral commission and the government survey, you're going to start to see how votes are being being processed and various communications. We set up our own elections project group, which did just concentrate on, obviously, voter ID and all aspects of elections, as you mentioned, staffing, booking polling stations, people like that as well. But that, a key part of that project group was obviously looking for these changes, which we did put in place. And then, we also, you know, made some decisions around making sure we had the appropriate amount of staff in place, which we had to do quite early on, and not the end, and we started to train those staff. So, the election took place in Norwich, administrator, thankfully, as I'm sitting here today, in accordance to the law, without challenge from any candidates, which is quite astounding. However, there were 68 voters who were unable to vote, choosing not having an approved form of photo ID. And what we showed in the report as well is, we have a, we have a couple of tables there, which then shows comparative data compared to other local parties, either local to local, but also some of our family of voter quality protection makeup to Norwich. So, there were also 116 individuals based, arriving without good form, but we did return them later to base, so 60 of them didn't relate to vote, but 116 arrived with approved form of photo ID, so didn't arrive, but returned to voting. We had 316 voter policy certificates issued, and so they were issued by electoral expression officers via us, our local elections team, and of which 165 of those reduced voter policy certificates where we use a poll extension. There were 26 applications submitted actually on the very deadline itself. There were no temporary voter policies issued, so there were ones where somebody had lost their application, and we used the new one sent through, but the deadlines had gone past, none of those were issued. However, we did issue five courtesy proxies, so an option for people if they didn't have ID after the deadline to apply for voter policy. One of the things they could do is apply their courtesy proxy, which would then allow somebody else to vote on their behalf, which in that proxy would then lead an approved form of voter ID to vote. And we had, we had five courtesy properties issued. Were they all related to voter ID or were they included? They were all related to voter ID. So, we took some key stakeholder feedback, so we, as always, we speak to people in there all day, working at polling stations, and we also speak to local party agents, who also do work very hard on the day, and have lots of communication with candidates and local volunteers. Almost all, I'm interested to talk examples of the places we've used, and the clients who've approved a voter ID, essentially, every single polling station in Norwich had voters who came in and said they were not happy about this change. The bottom point was, you also then need to contribute to vote. I think what I want to say at this point, I did mention it before, but the person who asked those people who were saying that they were unhappy were not expressing that to the people we had working there, they were actually talking about the legislation that was reported, so it wasn't, it wasn't that they were having a go at the people we had polling station staff, they were actually more talking about the legislation and the changes. However, there were, we presiding officers did report, there was increased instance of anger and aggression to the staff, however, it was thankfully accepted to the polling stations. Feedback from presiding officers on the day. So, feedback from the siding offices on how Norwich City Council managed the process with voter policy, with 43 out of 46 responding, not reporting any issues. The electoral commission also completed the detailed report of the impact of the Elections Act at national level, and that's sort of, that's the proof that will be the report as well, and they were then be able to give a national picture in terms of public awareness, how many people were aware that they needed voter ID applied to go to vote, the uptake of voter policy across the country, and of course, the figures around individual differences in the way. But also, they also looked at this confidence in terms of running surveys to find out how people felt and how confident they were in the different processes. And the local governments, we're having our T L G I units, local governments.
Information units.
Information units. They gave some feedback, and this is, this is a survey which we've said, given to electoral administrators, myself, Tom, and other authorities across country, and that feedback, if you look at that, that is additional information to what's in the report, it shows kind of where we are as professionals and where we're thinking, we're thinking. And I think one of the things we're really thinking about at the moment is the challenges of these changes in regards to a snap general election, so given that the Exeter Party Act now has been repealed, we're in a situation where we don't know when the date for the next general election is, at the end time, I guess, between, maybe next year or in January 2025, so we are in that place, and it's kind of, how are we going to care for a high term election with these changes? Colleagues elsewhere, certainly, says that they've had issues with polling station staff, local deterrents, insufficient funding of electoral services, so that's been brought up by colleagues. The complexity of electoral law, I think that is very much an administration, administrative point, and what that is, there are several pieces of elections law, which then factor into different parts of elections, different election contests, registration, elections, and actually, what we've been saying for a long time as administrators, the AAs, that we might recommend to have one bit of election law, a, a, which we can then also use rather than refer to different parts. The statutory time zone, which is something that's been picked up as a concern, the mag time half-pipe election, and, you know, questions, other questions about service provision across local politics, which have sort of run with the colleagues. But what, if you look down further downwards, you can actually see that some of the, some of the issues which is left hanging around, first of all, the lowest one actually is personation in polling stations, which is obviously one of the reasons why two sets of tests have been brought in. We also had some visits on polling day as well, and I asked my colleague from Birmingham Victoria to supply some feedback, she did, that was after the publication of the report, and this was essentially her feedback, she'd gone, she went to self polling stations in Mount Park and town press, and she, at the States there, was aware that, she saw that staff or whatever had a low trend for introduction of voter ID, and that comes through, because it was around that, what didn't take part of the plan. There were, I think this is a pattern, actually, there was a considerable number of people, even in this polling station, she visited with her colleagues, but had, were registering their, and having this change to polling station staff, however, it did not see, it's not most people campaigning, so I think people coming with their ID, saying they didn't approve, then voting. She commented on those good communications around polling stations, around posters of people in display, and this is a really interesting one, which I was, I was quite surprised by, I thought most people would be using driver's licenses and bus passes, and I did, but actually, a lot of people were using bus passes, which I think is, was a really interesting one, given the context of elections coming up, particularly elections in London, for instance, but the Oyster Pass might be something which is used for certain people at a certain age, but they're not going to be able to use for other people and below that age, so that's very interesting.
Are you happy to take a question now, or would you, yes, okay, Councillor Sands?
Uh, thank you, Chair. The use of bus passes is really, really interesting, because it suggests that people who were voting, perhaps in certain age cohorts, do think that they're only going to 65, 60 people have bus passes, I don't really know, but I noticed in the electoral report as well, there is the approved age identity part, which I presume is something issued to people who have been turning eighteen. I don't think, I mean, I wasn't aware of that at all, I don't think many people were. So, I think we need to make it clearer that there are some certain forms of voter ID that would be acceptable, that could encourage younger age groups to come out and vote.
Yeah, yeah, and then I've got a couple of more people with questions.
I think we might, I think we, we, the pass card, which is essentially an approved page, a lot of students use it for, essentially, get to us and to buy our top. One of the things we, which I was not concerned about, but I was kind of interested about that, the token part of the pass card, was that they're, they're used by companies, so I know that the prior to the last election, there were issuing them free, it doesn't mean that necessarily it would always be free, or something like that, they have to renew. Now, the voter policy certificate, which is issued by the local authority, is free, and what I, what we have to be very careful, is we're ensuring that people are able to obtain a free form of photo ID, which anyone could get, so you have local control over the pass cards, and absolutely, it's a way of, of usually, you know, getting ID, photo ID, and issued by many people, but for me, the fact that the local authorities is free and anybody can apply for it is really, really important, and I think, so, I think in addition to, obviously, every form, approved form of ID, I think the voter policy certificate is key in that, because it's some of the.
Does the voter authentication certificate have a photograph on it then? Because, I mean, I wasn't aware of how to go about getting them, so if we promoted those amongst our various wards, I mean, do we have a ban that goes down on a certain day, and meets keep and takes a photograph, and then posts them out there, VAC, I mean, how is that done?
Do you want to, then we'll go to Councillor Fulston.
So, you see, the, the way a voter policy certificate is applied for is online, so it's, so we apply it online, and then, like, if you can have a pass or anything like that, you'd essentially attach a photograph, that would then go through, and somebody in the office would then see if it's accepted or not, photograph, and the application is accepted, it's had to be on the register, and then the votes are checked. However, if what we, if people aren't able to do that, what we had set up, that I was told, we have, we couldn't, for example, you can get online, for instance, they, they were able to come to City Hall, we would be able to take a photo of them, and that's again, for the process, the online process, we've done, essentially do that.
Thank you. Can I go to Councillor Fulton Macalister, followed by Councillor Frimsley? Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. And so, earlier on, previous time, you, I think this, LGI use, with regard to the underfunding of election teams. Now, I know that in Norwich, we, we like our election team to be more proactive, and you've done an amazing job at how, how some of the projects that, that have been asked by councillors and the pub. In terms of, and this comes from something that, that Councillor Carrington was asking in the pre-meeting, in terms of the support for the people that don't have photo IDs, you've spoken a little bit about how you will assist them through that online process if they don't have the necessary tech skills. Would you feel that your team would have enough capacity to, to, essentially, if customer contact services identified people who needed that type of ID, if they were to steer them to your team for that support?
How many people have over the electoral community? I mean, the members coming in, the people who've presented to us, that they needed a in-person process with very low, I think, when they're up in the open course of local elections, of the general election, that is going to run, but even if it's like a five or six fold, it probably would be something that you, like, the current basis could cope with.
That's, that's helpful to know, just point of view about recommendations and things. Thank you.
I think, just, and on that point as well, there are, there are things we just don't know as well, so I think in terms of your capacity, we don't know, we, you know, I think when we move a little bit further on in terms of what's going to happen in the future, we're still waiting for a lot of secondary legislation enacted, that's key, because once we get that secondary legislation, you can then really start a plan, and capacity is key to that. So, when we look at the detail, and the government eventually gives us that detail, we can then really start, you know, and then, you know, have those conversations with the attorney officer, you know, to solve, to say, actually, yeah, we're here, we may be, actually here, we know that well, but we are, but we're still waiting for some of that detail from the government.
Specifically, the faithful parties.
Yeah.
Thank you, and over to Councillor Frimsley.
So, it seems to me that this whole voter ID thing is designed to prevent voter fraud, that's what the government say, isn't it? They'd say, this is to stop people turning up voting who are not who they say they are, or people turning up who don't have the right to vote, to vote. So, my question follows on from the last point about lots of bus passes being used as voter ID. How secure do we know is the bus pass issuing system? For instance, Councillor Sands said that a nurse's ID badge from the hospital, which entitles a nurse to walk onto the ward, open up drugs cupboards, and give people dangerous injections, is not something which is suitable for a voter ID, yet a bus pass, I, I have a feeling that it might be quite easy to get a bus pass with a photograph on, if you're not exactly who you say you are. Do we know anything about that?
I'm a couple of years away from applying for my AGLs. However, so actually, I will, I'm sure, I might have to defer to some colleagues here. However, what I do understand, that the government, what the government were saying in terms of this issue around, for instance, the Oyster Pass, so you've got the, the under, I think, the younger Oyster Pass, and the over 60s one, which is obviously, you can just, you know, something we're looking at, or London, we're looking at for mayor elections, that's, there are two different types of Oyster Pass. And one of the things the government were saying is actually, the application process for over, it's over 60s, but concessory pass, there is more to that application than there is to the, the younger lot, a bit like the younger person's rail card, essentially, you go in, if you give your date, but to get a younger person's rail card, whereas the over 60s concession card to go travel, and there, there are more pass staff, the detail of that, I don't know unfortunately, but I think that's where the government are saying, well, this is why this particular form of ID, photo IDs, etc., and this one isn't, because of how the application process is done, and issues and verification, or that, that's correct.
Thank you. Over to you, Councillor Galvin.
I was just wondering, are we on to questions now, or have we finished the presentation?
There's a few just, some stuff about.
Little bit more to go, isn't there? Yeah, we'll do that. Councillor Haines.
One question, occurs to me, to start the election, we nearly asked you, Stuart, what about this? Have you become any issues where there were people's names on their ID didn't match up with their names on the ballot? So, we've had some in the past, we've had a few in the past, I've seen people getting married, but have never bothered to chase any electoral roll, because it doesn't occur to them, to the polling station, or we've had confusion about why you might have went to this name, I haven't used it for a period. Yeah, it's like, well, it's because you tell me, that's it, your surname. So, did we have any issues with that? Yeah, particularly surname, because I'm already married, I'm thinking of, but.
So, as far as the training exercise for our polling station staff, we, it was one of the scenarios, we, we built in some scenario, and so we had to have, essentially, members in my team, sending these voters, and having, you know, somebody who had different types of ID, and one of them, of course, I think it was Jackie in my team, she got married, and she had a different surname, and we then went through that process, and so essentially, the way the ID check is done is you have to be confident with that person in front of you, is that person who's showing your ID, you're already doing the register check. Now, you could, you know, essentially, as part of that conversation, the polling station staff could probably say something like, well, it looks like, you know, you've got a different name, and then the person might say, oh, yes, I got married, or something like that. However, as long as that identity check is done, and the person, the presiding officer of polling station, old Clark, is happy that is that person in front of them, a bit like we would have done prior to voter ID, where we would have had people make their names, we're coming in, and if they've got married, and they saw my name is so-and-so, but actually on the electoral register, that hasn't yet updated, that wouldn't be an issue in terms of, you know, saying that that's not, that's on the register, so it's a similar approach.
Yeah, just to answer that, I don't think we had one example where somebody who's not issued their allocation because their name is threatened, so.
So, I think the training, hopefully, will, there may be no expectations of that.
Hold on, don't mind that, just how do you stop unconscious bias in those situations? I mean, I think you're a little bit answered with not having anyone turned away, but, I mean, in future, is there any unconscious bias training that will be done as well?
In what ways?
So, obviously, some people, not everybody, and it would probably be a minority, I would hope, would hear someone speaking a slightly different accent, and immediately be more suspicious of them than of, of someone who's just white, British, et cetera. So, there, there could be some grounds for unconscious bias.
It's a rare case where men were against them, really, that, because if I came in and said, oh, you know, with a different surname, they're like, oh, she's got married. If that's the point in politics to do that, which is less common for a man to change his name or marriage, so it's a rare situation when a member of these.
There is, and obviously, there is the rarest elements as well, where people will discriminate unconsciously against people of different ethnicities or.
Well, I'd hopefully, I would, through the process, would, is, you know, we'd be, you know, we'd have feedback, the siding offices, feedback from old Clark, old Clark's feedback to the siding offices, obviously, if we were to be made aware of anybody, you know, essentially discriminating or anything like that, then that would obviously be a basic matter, and we would, we would investigate that straight, straight away. However, I don't think I could answer, and we, we train our, our polling station staff as well as we can, and, and we ask people as part of that training to be respectful, you know, not to get into conversations about politics or anything like that, but to be respectful, also to, to follow the rules and the law, but to be respectful, and certainly, when we're talking about voter ID, for instance, the key message for us when we talk to our staff is about allowing people to help them as much as possible, but probably a lot of them having any kind of, you know, purposely having a difficult conversation with them. So, I'd hopefully, we've got a training after our time.
Did you want to add to that?
So, just, just to add to that, we did put in a bit of mitigation against that as well, so essentially, we didn't need only the polling station staff, if they fall, that they have to refuse something about, because of a different name, we did say to call the office, and if, if, if that, if it could have been resolved at that point, we would have called in the polling station inspector to have a second, a second offer, so.
That's really helpful, thank you. I was, I was also, I was also just going to add that, I think, within the training and within some of the things we thought about leading up to the down potential scenarios, we did, and nationally as well as locally, there was a lot of consideration made to issues that minority groups may face when they attend the polling station, so a simple example of that was, there's a lot of thought given to those from the trans community, and how they might be impacted if their ID is different, and I think actually, the fact they could apply for a voter ID certificate, leading up to it, that might be different from their driving license passports, quite helpful in that regard, and also, things like where there may be members because of people for religious reasons, didn't feel comfortable showing their face for an ID, specific provision was made for a safe space or a discreet space for them to be able to go, so I think there was quite a few things thought through to try and mitigate impacts on those that might be affected.
Can we, can, shall we move on to more questions? Can we, shall we finish the presentation?
I should ask a question on that.
Okay.
Have you consulted, have you consulted with trans community about whether they felt that they need to take into account the ID?
Specifically?
Not yet, no, so we have done, we, we, we've done, obviously, the feedback that we made through the report in terms of the agents and staff, and it's certainly something we would be able to. agents and staff, and it's certainly something we would be able to.
Has he done that much?
Yeah, I'll go through to Dr. Devoe.
It's just disappeared again.
Almost got to the end. It is the last slide.
Okay, so the election facts doesn't end here. We've still got a lot of work to get through over the next, next eighteen months or so. And so in, so coming up in October is the elections will have the option to apply for postal proxy vote using the government online portal, they've been submitting their registration vote and the voter authority certificate currently. We're still awaiting secondary legislation and technical requirements to know exactly what that will look like. I think going forward, the idea that will be launched with registration in country, that the third quarter pool will be, that people will find a first instance to via the online portal and then a paid application will be, will be the backup. All British citizens, so we've got open votes for life coming in in January. And so that's all British citizens overseas to be allowed to vote in UK by the end of the elections, a national referendum, regardless of when they left the UK. That replaces a fifteen year requirement that has been since, last many, many years. Again, still awaiting the secondary legislation and the technical requirement. So in May next year, so we've got the limit of postal votes an individual can hand in at a polling station or council office. I don't think that's necessarily ever been concerned here in Norwich, but I think it's the idea is that an individual can only hand in a handful of postal votes at a polling station, so the amount five or, my understanding is it's about five or six per person. And the idea limits really to a family group. And another people, someone may act for a proxy for, and essentially that's changed in, you could have limited number of close family members, but now it's only two people, regardless if they're related to you or not. And then if you've got a proxy for overseas, you can have two overseas letters as well. Here's a change that we've only learned about in the last couple of weeks. So you can see that it's an incredibly fluid situation. So postal voters to be applied for a postal vote every three years. So this was due to be implemented over three years. So this was going to be a process that we could be starting in January twenty twenty four. It's now going to be a process that we're going to have to be completed by January twenty twenty six. So what that means is that everyone will have to reapply, there's no P I refresh it and we will have to reapply for a postal vote. And as part of that postal vote application, they're going to submit their national insurance number and photo.
I think just to add a name, perhaps in terms of Norwich, is that we were looking at potentially twenty thousand post signature, new signature. So due to that, we did an exercise a few years ago during COVID, we got additional postal votes. They were all coming to that period of time, a period of time, where we then had to get the new signatures from them. So potentially what that would mean is that if those people did not return a fresh signature, then that postal vote would subsequently be cancelled and then they'd have to either reapply at a later stage or vote at a polling station or a proxy vote. What what the government are saying now is obviously they've looked at that and I think what they're saying now is actually look at all the good postal voters. However, you have now to January twenty six, so the electoral registration officer has to, January twenty twenty six, to look at all that postal votes in terms of getting a new signature from them. So practical point of view, that means, you know, we would then be able to make that kind of judgment of when the best time in the election cycle would be to to do that process. We would then be able to take that into account in the upcoming election.
Thank you very much. That's really, that's a brilliant presentation following on from a very full report. So thank you. Councillor Galvin, you, you had a question.
And did you ask about the format? So we've finished our report now, including things that are coming up, so it's now on to.
Now on to questions.
I wanted to ask, so you did mention that there's a full schedule of communications and everything planned out for the future and that you would do a mail shot to everyone. There has been a mail shot to people and that there are certain people that are more at risk from this. For example, elderly people and that's certainly the anecdotal evidence I found canvassing that it was elderly people who didn't necessarily understand what voter ID was and much less likely to have it if they didn't have a bus pass, et cetera. But there obviously various sections don't have it. Is there enough money in the budget to do targeted mail shots to really specific groups going forward? Could that be a thing that would be welcomed as a recommendation from today? Obviously, we're looking for some concrete recommendations that help us mitigate the effect of this of this on, on people being bothered.
So it's a, it's a difficult one in terms of budget because what we really are doing is we're waiting for a lot of the secondary legislation to come through. So for me, Tom, Leah, Lee, to really think about, you know, where, where do we put that resource? We have, we have a resource, we have an elections budget, which is obviously agreed, you know, every financial year and then we would choose then to use that particular money. We do have also, we're ability for what's called new burdens funding. So we can actually do things and and the government will actually pay us to do that. And there are certain criteria involved in that. Again, that criteria is going to lead to what the new legislation looks like. However, if you look at what we've done in the past, so what we did is we put a voter ID on a mail shot within our counter tax letters. So when they went out in the March, that was quite straightforward thing to do because they let us go now anyway, so we simply dropped something in there. You know, in terms of other things, you know, where, where the budget sits, I think we have a budget. We forecast that budget. We have access to to funding, we can apply for funding, funding is given to us to spend as well from doing that from governments. But where we are in terms of, you know, which particular things we're going to do and where we target. I think for me, one thing I have to be very, very careful to be around geographical targeting. And we've done this before, is that we have to be very, very careful that when you, if you're targeting an area, for instance, an area which might have a particular demographic, you're then risking not targeting never areas like that demographic. And of course, because this is so brand new, we don't really know all the data. So I think you're quite right, but what was quite surprising to me was actually rather than, you know, maybe younger people, it was actually older people, you know, in, in anecdote, who said that they. So that's, you know, something we then need to build into our plans. So, you know, for me, I think we want, we want a plan to cover all of Norwich because we'll be lecturing all of Norwich, we have different tasks. But you're right, I think particular groups, I think that's something we could bring focus on if we have more data. But the the advantage of having done this already is we have now had more data and we can then really focus on what we're doing.
Leah, would you like to come in?
Going to add a bit Marty previous.
And then Marty.
Stuart's being kind about the budget. We will be forecasting an overspend on the budget at the end of quarter one. We've perhaps been a little bit prudent in the overspend we will be forecasting, but that is the position we're in across our election budget. Because whilst this has been going on, what we've also seen is significantly above inflation price rises in stationary and particularly postage costs and elections are very postage heavy. So across both, we have a separate budget for the election to the standard electoral registration activities that we do in the year, they are forecast to be overspent because of some of these significantly escalating costs. Stuart and Tom are doing a great job of trying to think how we can manage and look at things differently to accommodate, to, to try and reduce down the level of overspend that we may be seeing, but that is the position we're in. As Stuart says, what we might be able to do is if there's justification for it, put in and submit bids for additional funding to be able to do some targeted work. So it's absolutely not to know, but I do need to make clear we are in a difficult position over the budget.
Can I please go to councillor Shmira next, followed by councillor Galvin, councillor Carrington and councillor Haynes? Thank you. And councillor Osborn. Missed one out.
Points to make, thank you, Chair, but I'll stick with the communication side of it. I think it'd be very useful, I mean, the polling cards, for example, that we've got, it was not as clearly as it could have been, or there could have been a separate solo sort of sheet going in there or something like that. So you do need IDs, then you'd be able to target only the day voters rather than postal voters. So that might be one way to, to go out, make that really clear. And then you've got citizens in magazines and T L and what it's it and L or something like that, police orders. And there's some, some other options and maybe also working with the university to make sure that when they basically try and get people to sign up to register to vote, it might be a really important time when you do your, your annual survey, if you're still doing that, going out to speak to people, just a reminder there and then that they will need to have ID if they're going to vote not by post. Just a few suggestions for me on that.
Yeah, you'd like to reply, Anne?
Yeah, thanks. That's some really good points. And we're, we're very lucky, I think, just to take a bit of the oil, but to take some of the points there, it would be U E A and U N, we have really good relationships with them. So we do, we do lots of comments about communication works anyway, we have done for a number of years. We're really happy to be the ultimate involvement, process is now working with U E A. So we're able to essentially get people on the register at least even before they're voted very early on in terms of when they're signing up for the process. So we have that, but I think I do take the point about the poll card. The poll card is prescribed by law, so we are a bit limited, aren't we, really, in terms of really publicizing certain messages? Essentially, all poll cards have to, there is, there was a bit of divot, I'll talk about that. There was a bit of divot in the different ways of doing it. However, we are, the way we did it was certainly within the law in terms of how we can do this. So there's an A four end of rate poll card this year. We can't get all that information on A four and for the, for the concession poll card, we can't get all that new information in terms of voter ID onto the old traditional poll card, the A card. So we went into an end of rate letter, which would then provide that information on the back around the voter ID. So what would be the, you mentioned.
And citizens, ten people, magazines.
So we'll continue to use the magazine and we ask of our colleagues, you know, in housing and.
Just to add to the new U E A thing, every, as part of, every person gets added to the electoral register, they get confirmation that they've been added to the electoral register, which tells them the full details of what they need to be able to vote. And I think we are also looking at the possibility of what we can add to the canvas form in order to, you know, that would blanket, if you can, for all hats.
We're going to do more scope of the panel in terms of what we can actually provide.
Thank you. I'm going slightly out of order because I'm going to councillor Carrington next because she hasn't spoken. So I hope that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was wondering, is this a step to increase the use of social media by using other networks? I think at the moment, the examples given were Twitter and Facebook, which is obviously reaching the audience. But I'm wondering to reach out potentially younger ages, which we know have been missed a bit in all of this, whether the use of TikTok or Instagram or friends, et cetera.
That's a really, really good point. I'm afraid my, my colleague Sarah would be an expert on this because I think she did kind of use, I think everything the council has, so it has like an Instagram account, I think, I'm really not big into it as well. As I think I definitely, I think if we did that, so if it's missed a bit in the report, that's probably my fault. But anything the council has, it's communicated to a lot of people who want to use that. But it's a really good point, I think, you've made around actually also trying to see those groups externally and that sort of, including that as well. So we do a bit of that with the U E A and with Mira, you know, various different sort of voluntary groups. However, you know, we really want to try and improve on that as much as possible in terms of that communication.
Thank you. Councillor Sands, actually I've got you down next. Well, are you happy to wait? Well, I mean, it was, I've got, shall we go to councillor Prinsley, who's probably said less? Thank you. I'm trying to be fair.
Okay, so my question is about the British citizens living overseas. So I, I think in France, they have members of the legislature which represent the overseas citizens. But in this country, presumably people will vote in the constituency where they were last resident in this country. Is that, that's correct, yeah. And so my question is, do we have any figures on that? I mean, are there many thousands of people who used to live in Norwich who now live in Melbourne and Sydney who are likely to influence the election? And in which case, how would we work out which ward they were voting exactly?
That's a very good question of what it's like to be asked a small part of it. So as the rules currently stand, you have to be registered, you have to be previously registered in Norwich. So if you move abroad, you would be registered in a primary district award. So the last, at the last point you were registered, so for instance, you're in Beaufort and you move to Australia, if you're in B O one, and then you would obviously then, your postal, your postal's election, electoral registration would be linked to that particular ward. You can't vote in local elections anyway, but you would certainly know, you would know where you'd be voting, either in Norwich South or Norwich North, for instance. So, interesting, really interesting point about how would it work if people were never registered in, in the UK. So currently, if you, if you, if you turn eighteen and are never registered, there are, there are ways in terms of connecting it to the family. But we are, we are kind of waiting, aren't we, for further information on that. So it's a very good question.
Very much waiting for secondary legislation. I can tell you that the last general election, I think it was around forty six hundred overseas voters and the, the theory that being put forward is that it will triple. So we'll have about two thousand overseas voters in this.
So, so in a tight election, which may come, we could see a situation in which the result of the election was determined by people who don't live in this country.
Possibly. Possibly, yeah. I think, I think your, your example around this of the Assembly National around having a kind of overseas territory, that's not something which I would think is being suggested. I think the constituency link will continue around overseas electors. So, so you won't have embassy voting, for instance, which happens in other elections across, across the world because obviously it's all linked to constituencies. So you'll still be having, most of our overseas voters will need to arrange an absentee vote, proxy vote or a poster vote.
And of course, we do already have overseas electors. So this is essentially removing the fifteen year cap. So what you're really talking about is additional people that lived in the UK more than fifteen years ago. So that partly comes down to their inclination to register to vote. So I, I can't believe we'd be looking at big, big numbers here.
Thank you very much. Councillor Osborn, I've got your name down. Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Right, thank you. So before that, are there any more sort of nuanced questions, I might say? Councillor Galvin, followed by councillor Haynes? If you're happy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Same question that's perhaps, I don't know what accounts as, but it is a wider, it is a wider question. It's obviously a problem with this legislation. It's removing the right to vote from quite significant amount, percentage of people and that's why it's brought in, it's clear. So we're making plans quite far into the future with this. What's the likelihood of a new government? What's the likelihood of a new government actually removing this legislation, which is probably what should happen in fairness? That might be a question for political.
Obviously can't, because I actually never ran for it. I mean, if you're asking around, because it's a different government, I think I wouldn't be able to ask that, but I would suggest potentially just what's going on in the state of the Senate, where you've got the government administration who are taking a very different route to the national government around electoral registration. So that might be something, if members are looking at potentially what could happen in the future of a different government, what's going on in Wales, it's interesting to know better specifically.
Can I bring in councillor Kendrick's air, please?
Yes, I think this is pretty much a political answer, so I think the answer should come from a politician, i.e. myself. And yes, the public is duty to estimate relative changes also. I had a question about allowing those EU citizens who have the rights, who actually have permanently, one resident, also really given the right to vote, which has a priority to that, right, they're from town. It's not a very common situation where there's an underclass, people who were paid taxes, but don't have a security, and we actually stuffed the war wall, because the African Republic's reputed to allow an emperor or a citizen to vote their election. So we're likely to be telling politicians about EU citizens to vote too.
Thank you. Can I go to councillor Haynes next, please?
Yes. Mine's on the power of the absentee vote changes, the application of five four, which raises the issue that often by councillor, or another goes to vote at last, and then they reapply close to the election. Is there anything we can do to try and identify the people who vote at last, or sort of almost send them a panic, that there will be a general election next year, people need to reapply now?
So.
Kind of message, like particularly targeting cons at that, people who can cancel their post vote, but may want to then reapply?
I think this is, this is a key change about, that happened since the report. So we would have had to, there would have been at least 20,000 people that we would have had to gone through this process early next year. Now it's going to be in January 2020 to 2026. I think there will be a process in which we communicate all of those people and tell them that requirement is to reapply. And exactly what further information we give on top, I think is still to be decided and we'll be still also need to know what additional funding there may be for us to allow us to do that.
Yeah, is there any additional funding?
We haven't had any confirmation of what the structure of funding will look like.
Thank you. I'm going to councillor Osborne next, but I'm aware that councillor Sands has waited patiently and that I have councillor Shmira and councillor Galvin waiting to speak. Is there anybody else that I've missed? Okay, let's go to councillor Osborne now. Thank you.
And there are some changes that the government, that they even, if they are able to keep this, you know, without revealing the whole legislation, which is very late at the moment, if like the legislation, but for example, changes in the form of ID that can be used for using polling cards, would urge the late parts to, you know, the smaller recommendations to actually write the new late parts, to aid, prioritize the dealing with the, if not doing that, then for example, allowing use of polling cards as ID, it's only 35% of late years supported that, and that's been a lot of the time. My other question is a wide point around how we did democracy. So one for the elections, so after one part comes, really fourth part, third part, maybe. So I wonder if there's a, something the council can do, sort of like to use participatory processes, citizens' juries, citizens' assemblies, with people like the student government or foundation foundations or all who support governments and local councils in running those processes as a way of getting more engagement outside the election period, and that possibly be a recommendation to have a look into.
Thank you. Can we go now to councillor Sands?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kendrick gave the normal start, so that councillor Galvin was looking for, I remember that was a bit. But one of the statistics which comes out of interest, I think, in relation to the proportion of postal votes, and it mentions that 63.5% of voters in Bothell were postal voters. But was that 63.5% of those who did vote, or was that 63.5% eligible?
Okay, thank you. Over to councillor Shmira, please.
Yeah, I've got a couple of points, my honesty in response to councillor Carrington's question about social media and budgets and things like that. I mean, I think the government earmarked several millions of pounds for basically advertising the fact that these changes were coming through as one of the reasons why a lot of political parties were quite unhappy with that, that money basically going for an unnecessary advertising campaign for a basic policy that didn't need to be enacted. Can we basically just spend the money and send the government bill for some of these campaigns? Because it's fairness, they can sort it out. Perhaps significantly, but I think there's a little bit of truth in that in terms of our, we have also initiated that there are people, even if people were 68, people were disenfranchised, in terms of our policy, that didn't need to be enacted. So that's my first point. I've got a couple more of mine, Chair.
Ooh, good.
And the second point is feedback to your staff on polling day in MA3, there was a gentleman who hadn't, had his passport renewed for about 20 years, but was still allowed to vote because it looked like enough like him. And I'm just wanting to ask about the sort of consistency, so that basically, he was definitely allowed to vote in MA3, but if it had gone to BO1, I mean, that's been mentioned, to make sure that that consistency is all put away across the poll box. And also within that, it's a sort of, unless it's clearly not that, so clearly hardly identified that as one, and it happens to be, I didn't see what I mean, that it needs to be, and the default should be, yes, that's an acceptable form of ID, rather than, we definitely need to check that and make sure. So that's sort of, when we assume a leading role, then we assume that it isn't a valid form of ID, so a question on that. And then the other question I've asked, and the last question, you mentioned about these 68 people who were turned around and couldn't vote unfortunately. Given the fact that these, as long elections often are low turnouts, when we get to a general election, we're in that particular place, I mean, of the electoral double. And I suspect that the people who would be turned away more than double, because it's likely to involve people who unfortunately don't often have access to ID. And so I fear that your staff may have a lot of quite infuriated people. And it's funny, if you could maybe explain about the sort of training that they're given, because you're struggling to understand it from what your presentation was, and struggling to find people to staff poll stations. If people just get a load of views from understandably infuriated electors who can't vote, how are they able to deal with that? And also, I suppose another question is, the obvious answer is to say, well, say if it's probably fixed, choose someone who brought it in, but that's been anyone as a political gesture. So to avoid that kind of response, I was just wondering if you can maybe answer those three questions, please.
So I think picking up on that, I think councillor Holden, I'm a bit relieved about that, it's my life work there, so I was a bit worried, you could say something, but yeah, I'm glad you had a good experience there. So and one thing we did pick up, and I think a lot is around training, is that what we were saying to staff is to, you know, is do that positive assumption. We're not, we're not inviting staff to turn people away what we want, we're inviting staff to enable them, so they'll be able to pass their vote. Now, that does involve a conversation, a vote, a head broad and a proof of ID, it's having that, what's it about, how can we, you know, get to you in a place where you can vote? Clearly in the first year where it's a new change, that did happen. So I'm glad that you picked that up. And also, I think you're right, I think the, given the political dynamics of general election, you know, that's, you know, I mean, people based on that, that as well, but given the dynamic of the general election, obviously that is something we will be building into our training, we do that anyway, as a, as a self-managed conference. We have, we have, you know, really good people working in our home places. A lot of them actually do a lot of that anywhere they're at, obviously, a lot of the work, you know, within the city council, who are managing, charging contestants at their day jobs and in that's really very, because I see that, that's still there. So we also, you know, we're really, really sure that when we do the training, that we are prepared with those challenges. Of course, open, if we didn't know what it would be like on polling day, we could train them fast, but we do know now what it's like for a local election, and now we build that into a national election, and obviously for the general election as well. Your point on the budget for it, and the national government set aside, I can't be exactly accurate, it's certainly, I mean, in terms of the pounds, so.
Oh, about the, so potentially a bit. I've probably missed a bit on that one.
Oh, sorry. Getting to the mitigation of not good likeness, again, we didn't have anybody who refused that thing because they weren't, they're a lot of insubstantial. And again, within the training, we also said that would be a communication to us, and then we'd bring somebody else with second opinion, et cetera. And, yeah, I think that's all.
Thank you. Can I go to councillor Galvin, followed by councillor Sands? Thank you.
Thank you. And something I think everyone will echo is that certainly wanted to thank you for the voter, the temporary voter ID given out from City Board in the run-up, people that had to come in and get it. It did work really well, I think, so I had a few people that came in. So I think we could perhaps record that as a thanks, as one of our, I'd like to make sure that we do thank the team for all the work they have done, and also the report was so full, and clearly a lot of work has gone into making.
You're absolutely right. And also for the poll clerks on the day, who were unfailingly polite and kind and always are actually over very many years, for me, where I vote, and you know, go on.
So, yeah, that was just the first kind of point, really. So I was glad to have some reassurance around the European vote going on, because that's clearly glaring inequality and sort of not, it's not commensurate with a fair democracy at all, but a lot of the governance government do art. But it doesn't sound like it's going to be completely repealed by, we haven't got that assurance here. So we do need to do that mitigating going forward, some of the inequalities that will start to become entrenched with this form of ID. So I just wanted to ask, obviously it's a bit of a moving target, because things are still changing, and then they're changing again. So in no it's going to change, it's going to change again. But if there's a kind of theory of change around those inequalities, or a piece of work that council's gone through, to look over a longer term about who might be permanently left out by this and locked out of voting, so to do that piece of policy work in the constituency, perhaps the recommendation to look long term, who could permanently be affected by this, because obviously we're at the beginning of this now. And perhaps we can wrap into that recommendation, looking at some participatory methods that sit alongside, maybe not people replace the ballot box completely as a form of fair democracy, but this is, this is a government having a go at doing that by the back door. So I think as a council, if we can look at, as we've talked about already, having some processes to sit alongside some investigations into participatory methods as one recommendation. So I suppose it's not really a question, it's just asking if you could consider having a theory of change model, so that you can come up with some metrics and a longer term plan.
I think, I think you're right, I think, I think you're right. I think the, what we do have, we have some metrics, actually, once we went through the level of elections, we had some data, so we have the raw data, of course, of who voted, who couldn't vote, and what we can now start building into the future is obviously expanding on that, as you say, doing a bit more work. We have, we have excellent, you know, we have excellent colleagues within the council who do that work in other areas, in terms of, you know, demographic, different parts, social equality. We have, we have some of that work being done now in other areas, so actually, we've got some really good experts in hand.
Thank you. Can we just go to councillor Sands? And then I think we're into recommendations, aren't we, after that?
That's the, I was going to start talking.
Okay.
And if we look on page 40, which has a set of different applications, I think, it allows us to create a series of priorities. And I think one of the priorities, I think, probably one of the most important, is the people who voted this year, adopt voter ID in terms of driver's licenses, passports, et cetera, et cetera. So I think probably a priority would be to promote and push the voter authenticity authority certificate as an avenue, that's something which we can be proactive about and really engage with the community, engage with the local constituencies in the 13 wards, and really push that to enhance people's ability to go out to vote. So it appears to me, I mean, I wonder how many people, because it's a low turnout this year, it was expected to be anyway, how many didn't go out to vote, if it's maybe they didn't have any kind of voter photographic ID. So I think that would be something, a priority in my book. The other one, of course, is that we do have some info, sort of is the proof of age. Interestingly, a student ID card, which is photographic, is acceptable, but that same student would have a proof of age, a high potential pass, and that would be acceptable, unless you pointed out there, done by a number of independent companies. So I think that would have to be a second priority in order to get young people out voting, because it's more for all of graduates of high school this year who've turned, you know, 18 and will be eligible for some sort of proof of age thing, I think they can probably even get it at 17, I would imagine. So I think that would have to be a second priority. The other thing I think we need to emphasise is that EU citizens living in Norwich can vote in love for elections, and if they have an EU identity card, some description, that of course is acceptable. And I suspect a lot of people possibly weren't aware of that. So I think that would be an important priority too. The other things, you know, Northern Ireland and Scottish things, I don't think they would be very, very significant in Norwich, really. But, yeah, those are my ideas.
Thank you. Over to you councillor Kidman.
Just a really quick point on that. I spoke to a lot of people who won't wear, I've spoken about it already, the expired passport, the expired voter ID, it's always looked like them. And so on the back of that, precisely more, it doesn't matter if you pass sports, but do you mind, if it looks like you, it's fine.
Or even expired, I don't think.
That was one of my thoughts, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other recommendations? And shall we just, if not, shall we go through the list of, yes, councillor Dalton MacAllister?
Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation that we ask Cabinet to essentially rerun the same postal vote programme that we did in 2020, where we the same postal vote programme that we did in 2020, where we wrote at all non-postal voters to encourage them to sign up to a postal vote, because the changes to postal votes at present is just related to the days for and the National Insurance Number. And this would help a significant portion of people navigate the voter ID issues that they may face.
Thank you. Councillor Sands?
And I was going to suggest by way of promotion, obviously, you're going to do all the usual things, Citizen Magazine, and the other social media things that people mentioned. But I think it would be an idea to proactively engage the local mass media, i.e. EDP, Even News, Angry Television, and BBC News, and radio, and wherever possible, get people speaking on those and get that out as often as possible. I'm certain, I know they're always looking especially at the stories. So they will be more than happy to engage with and promote those things.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, yes, can we?
I'm sorry.
Go to you next.
I was going to make a point on councillor Dalton McAllister's recommendation. I completely appreciate you can't really put a price on democracy and I don't want to try and sky me in that regard. Stuart and Tom have looked previously about the costs of running that and the impact on the budget. To do that sort of exercise, what happens is we send out a mailing, which costs us money in terms of stamping and printing, that type of thing. You then have the additional costs of registering those votes, processing the votes when it comes in, and processing mills. It costs about £55,000, which is quite a bit of money, probably surprisingly so when I saw the figures. I think it would be, it would be helpful if we could secure funding to do that sort of thing. And the Department for Leveling Up Communities has sort of previously talked about authorities can make fund, evidence-based bids. So it might be something that would be helpful if a recommendation could be enhanced by adding seeking funding towards that.
Stuart, do you like to add to that?
The way people are going to be applying for postal votes, I think, has changed. Now, we haven't had all of the separate letters sent through yet. So the process of applying for postal votes is moving away from a paper form to people applying online. Now, clearly, we will still get paper forms, which will then be through that process locally onto the portal. Now, we haven't had all the detail. We don't know if the portal's going to be up and running. However, obviously, we will know in the coming months how those changes in regards to how people apply for postal votes is going to be. And then that can be reflected over what communities we do and how that's going to be.
Thank you. Yes, Tom?
Recommendation being slightly amended. I think on this occasion, I'd probably disagree because I want Cabinet to consider it a political priority. Obviously, it's not, it's not a decision for us. It's asking the Cabinet to consider it. But I would hope that Cabinet would consider this a political priority, which is probably helping the administration around the table.
Thank you. Councillor Haynes, followed by councillor Galvin.
Yeah, there was a point made earlier about different ways to bring in democratic discussion, where you can find your heart and go for the elections. We ought to think about how else we can engage in our communities, specifically with the philosophy of people voters and that. So I'd like to formulate a recommendation around, on top of elections, on top of the consultations we do anyway, but looking at citizens' assemblies as a form of engagement with the community. And something to point your attention to really, was making sure that those are, we'll make some effort to make those diverse and representative more knowledge, rather than it just being the middle class people who can afford to take time, well, something like that. But looking at racial diversity about involving the people from the working class, in broader communities, single parents and other groups that are traditionally unrepresented.
Thank you for that.
Just a quick, I'll probably round all the recommendations, not any particular ones. Any recommendation which would go to Cabinet, we'd still need to go to the electoral registration officer or the attorney officer, who are individually, who's essentially living, who's responsible for electoral registration, electoral registration officer, and attorney officer for elections, local election, general election. So I think if we're looking at recommendations, it's Cabinet, and you're clearly, you're back there on this, they would then have to then go to the attorney officer consideration, because they have that individual responsibility for either elections or registrations. I think we just need to ensure that that's sort of fed in, if that makes sense. So Cabinet, as people are aware, Cabinet would make some of those, they would actually go to the attorney officer individually or the electoral registration officer.
Thank you. I think it's really important that everybody understands that and that we're all clear. Thank you. Councillor Galvin?
Yeah, thank you. Just a point to add to both of those recommendations. The first one, as I understand it from the presentation, government is bringing you a way of applying postal votes online. Is that right? But we don't know when exactly, but it looks like there'd be a portal. So it would, it might be, although a good idea to get Cabinet to £55,000, might be money wasted if there's going to be a government portal that we need to give people a lot of information.
It's June, the end of October. But I know that the testing and the detail and the technology behind it is still ongoing. I mean, that's a very tight timeline. I believe there's still major technological things that they're working through. So the movement of the PI refresh back a couple of years, I think part of that is that we've had to get 20,000 people through that, through that process next year, obviously. It may have been a consideration that, that that process might be, that it would be preferential to delay that for a couple of years.
Just wondering, having that inside that recommendation, Cabinet.
I think just to advance that one, and I think that then it lends into kind of any, if you're doing any kind of communication around postal votes, we have to then consider any kind of additional service of postal votes. But then there would need to be that process where locally, any paper app questions would then be added on to the portal. So you can encourage people to directly go on to portals and apply for those, or anything that's coming in locally to the office. We think, and we don't have all the data, and I think I keep saying that we don't have all the data, they may completely change. We think that then those paper applications would then have to be processed on to, on to the portal by Tom, Tom. So I think it's just that consideration of being looking at services and application.
Okay, thank you. I know you want to come back on that. And councillor Haynes, you had a point.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, so you said that they've got £55,000 to do that postal vote, maybe. Is that inclusive of the cost of processing any additional postal votes yet on that budget cost of the opening? Yeah. So how many, if that's an all-inclusive cost, what percentage increase is that based on us getting on that?
Can you remember?
I think it was based on that we'd get a similar kind of response as last time, it was £10,000. So we rented from that £20,000 to that £29,000, £28,000. So during the COVID, we did a mail out on the COVID.
Yeah, just like we keep up, it's like cost per hundred postal votes.
I mean, it is, it is quite worked out also based on the technology that we currently use. So if that is different, or in the worst, in the worst case scenario, if that doesn't work as well as what we currently got, then that is going to take up a lot more resources.
And of course, we have a problem with postal votes. Scanners haven't worked properly on the day one, haven't they? Not for a while.
They've got new systems.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a slightly different point. Has that been scanning the postal statement coming back? Is that this is more an issue of the postal vote application?
Yeah, yeah. But I'm thinking that it's an all-in cost. If that's £55,000 based on predictions of what we had last year. Of course, we haven't had a GE since when we decided for 2020, you know, all the postal votes. That wasn't for a general election, actually a local election. So arguably, that £55,000 cost is higher if people notice general election.
I'm almost arguing against myself because the big chunk of it is actually doing the mail out to people. One thing we have got is we've introduced a new postal vote, well, a new election management system since, which has improved efficiency of the postal vote system. It really is quite impressive, what we get out of it. But that's gone as far as it can. In a way, there's very few efficiencies we can make now.
Thank you. Councillor Galvin? And then I think we should get into recommendations.
I am going to get into a recommendation here because it's backing up this ongoing, what we're revealing is that it's a moving target. We don't know exactly, we're told things and then they change. But the upshot of it all is that people are going to be left out despite the brilliant efforts of everyone here, which are noted. So a sort of recommendation around that could be commission of trial of participatory democracy methods, including citizens' assemblies, based on the theory of change, to ensure that wide-scale representation is achieved in Norwich. So in other words, we're opening a trap to back up representation alongside democracy, because clearly it's, it is.
Can you just give me that end bit again? Citizens' assembly based on the model of change.
On the theory of change.
Well, based on the theory of change to ensure that wide-scale representation is achieved. We might have to, the next power, but theory of change is an accepted technique to look to martial issues like this.
That wouldn't be for the attorney officer, the registration officer, that would essentially be the citizens' council. So that's something Cabinet could.
They could, they could agree. Okay. So can I just ask, Stuart, we're going to actually look at things that have been suggested, recommendations. Some are writ large because they've come up more than once. Stuart and Tom, would you like to stay for that? Or do you feel, you know, do you feel you want to be part of that? Or would you prefer to?
If the committee are happy for us to stay?
Oh, I'm sure the committee is happy. I was just thinking of your time and, you know, the latitude that we will give you in what you're doing. Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah, well, we prefer election notes, so we'd like to stick around.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. I've written down, actually, I've written down probably eight recommendations. Alex, I'm sure you've written them down better than I have. Could I ask you to go through them, please?
Yeah, sure.
Do you come on these screens because someone's typed them up? Are we able to, obviously that problem?
Oh.
I can tell it.
Okay.
Sorry, just because sometimes we get into top of the T R.
Yeah, the minutiae of which word?
We can do, we sometimes can double check back to the YouTube and do some refinement as well when we, when we need to. And then you finally agree them in the minutes as well. So we can put them up, but we will, we might, we can play with them a little as well.
So do we need them up then?
Do you want to dictate to me? And I'll type quickly. What's the first one you've got there noted?
Well, I've got the citizens' assembly. So actually, the last one, which councillor Galvin then said, again, we could almost take that as the first one.
Okay, so I've got, I've got that up.
Because it's come up along the way several times, if I understand correctly.
What was the first commit to trial of participatory?
Commission.
Commission?
Yeah.
I shouldn't do my own shorthand. That's trouble. Commission to trial of participatory democracy methods, including citizens' assemblies, based on the model of the theory of change to ensure wide-scale representation achieved. Yeah?
Yeah.
Is achieved.
Councillor Sands, you wanted to make a point.
Yeah, I had to say, I had to first come on the blue. But citizens' assemblies are not going to be accepted in council. It will be defeated, has in the past, on the grounds that we have 31 councillors elected who are our citizens' assembly, representing the people of the city. And of course, we're supposed to go out and engage with people in our communities, and which is part of, part of being a counter. So to suddenly, you know, have this, you know, lovely idea and theory, but it simply won't work. And I doubt very, very much, I certainly would oppose it in full council, I say here right now, citizens' assemblies won't be an acceptable part of the base of the city, shall we say, on grounds of already happened.
I suppose I would make the point that if it was something that didn't go through in the past, it doesn't mean that people couldn't try again. But I mean, that's another point. Yeah, you're being devil's advocate, maybe. Councillor Osborne, did you want to make a point on that? Or were you just?
I mean, I think this is probably the concern, mine, on that. The idea of assemblies is different to, it is a different form of engagement to elections, actually having an election. Yeah, but it would have been based on, but it is recommendable, it's came a lot of the literature on good governments, how it recommended, by the government, as well.
Ooh.
And, you know, in other councils, so it's possible, some of the, it's been supported as well, so.
Councillor Patter? Sorry, Councillor Osborne.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to say about participatory methods generally, they're successful if people from poor social backgrounds and ethnicities engage with them. So I don't know how successful it will be in this, this case. But I was just going to make that point.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Osborne?
The idea of commissioning it, so you use someone who specializes in doing exactly that, and ensure that all the tactics are represented.
Okay.
Can I just make a point?
Yes.
Sorry. I just want, yeah, so from that, even in those situations, those who can afford to engage with the process irrespective of, you know, what structure they're put into the democratic process, not everyone fully engaged with them. It really does make it incumbent for us as politicians to be that concrete. So, yeah, it's something we've got to reflect on.
Councillor Osborne?
Yeah, this point is not, it's not replacing having a council. It's another form of engagement. And typically, we have a whole engagement for, things we don't have, either or, it's no clear, there's two options, that you can get people to use in a more coherent way than just like the constitutive parties.
I wonder whether it could be useful at this stage to get the feeling of the meeting as to whether or not this would be a recommendation that we would like to take forward, rather than, you know, have more discussion on it, because it's certainly appeared many times in discussion. I mean, would, yes.
I suppose that we have all of the recommendations written up first and then.
And then we agree. Okay.
I recall the recommendation from councillor Osborne was very similar to this one, but worded differently. And I'd like to, I'd like to basically read and see everything out there.
Right.
It's essentially taking.
Yes, yes. I don't think you want yours to.
When I was less in time with this one, you were all right.
Right.
Why don't you?
Yeah, have you got a suggestion to amend it?
So I, can we come back to that?
We'll come back to it. We'll come back to it. We'll go to the second one now. I mean, I'd got second, who might be permanently locked out of voting, a piece of research around. I mean, I'd got second, who might be permanently locked out of voting, a piece of research around that. I don't know whether I dreamt that.
That was councillor Galvin.
Yes, I think it was.
Yes, that leads to this actually, so it's had an ongoing strategic piece of work based on a theory of change to check for mitigating going forward with data monitoring. And I think probably assured that was in place already, so I don't know whether I'll take still and whether you feel that that's necessary in policy terms. I noticed you nodding when I said it early on, but...
I remember it as a recommendation.
Yes, I remember it as a recommendation. Yep. So, shall we come back to it? Shall you think around it? And then I got, I think from councillor Sands, promoting and pushing the VACs, the voter...
Yeah, I've nominated like a sliding scale or prioritized list of things. Like the VACs, I think is a, the most immediate practical thing we can do. Followed by promoting this facility in order the use of group of age passes, people station to be more acceptable than student cards. And I suspect a lot of nurses could still have those as well. And of course, driver licenses, passports that are expired, people need to be really made aware that they are still acceptable. And also, we probably have a lot of people who are EU citizens who will have some sort of EU identity card. They may not necessarily have a passport because of course prior to Brexit, people would travel to Britain without a passport. And a lot of people in the EU don't have passports, but they can have national identity card. And so we need to, I think that should be one of the priorities too.
Thank you, councillor Sands. Stuart wants to come back on that.
I think it's just a question really to the committee. What we have here is obviously some communication recommendations. And I think what we do have currently is we have a communication plan. So, and that plan is then with various members of staff, obviously, the turning off several team, but also communications, our activity involved, our committee engagement teams involved. I think if you are making recommendations around communication, so promoting voter political messaging around EU citizens, and even the one around researching around areas. I think we could build that into our communications plan, and that'd be a really good place for, to get everything together. We've got several different communication recommendations essentially of promoting certain things. We could build that into our communication plan, and that into, you know, like the quality and everybody involved at the council can kind of build towards that.
Yep, that sounds good. I mean, another thing I wrote down was, I don't know if it was a recommendation, but it was a question. Who didn't vote because they had no voter ID? Was that something that we should be looking at? Will you be looking at it anyway? Or is that related to a piece of research that we might be doing as in section two?
Yeah, that's two, isn't it?
But should it be highlighted? That was, and then we'd also got ask Cabinet to rerun the postal vote. I think that was a recommendation, whether, whether it was, that was from you. Yep.
So that would be your recommendation to the electoral office to run this round?
Do you want to dictate it?
So I would say to ask Cabinet to rerun a postal vote registration program for current non-postal voters, as previously undertaken in 2020. Something like that.
Yep. Thank you.
With a recommendation like that, would the committee want to add in the line around technical terms? Future changes around absolute vote application. So it's a process, we don't know, what we don't know is the detail around the process. So how we would essentially run that particular process might be, might look slightly different depending on what the new secondary registration becomes through. So if the government says, say, okay, our applications now are online, would that, would that be different in 2020?
So even if the government were offering an online service, I think that people are more likely to respond if inviting, if someone just written out to them. I think that you're, and this way we can see the impact of our work. Whereas if we weren't asking them to go online, we couldn't necessarily track those people and see if those people actually responded positively or not to our, to our request. So again, I probably would not have the very final line that was written up there. It has already been deleted, I think.
Yes.
But that's, again, we're not a decision that the committee, we're a committee that makes a recommendation and a lot more detailed discussion could be had at Cabinet about this.
Thank you.
And taking into account officers' ability to deliver that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Haines?
On that specific one, where did we land with the idea of asking for, trying this? Asking the ERO to look for grant funding to cover? That, because it was grant, it's wasn't...
Yes, you.
But I think you go...
If the funding can be sought great, if it can't, we should push it.
Yeah, so it's important you'll look for that, but that should be your case, is that, as I say.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just sort of like you brought up, you may have...
Yeah, I don't object to securing funding.
It's, you don't want to...
Yeah.
But not subject to funding.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, there's some wording about, we want the funding, if we can't get it, we want to...
Requesting, yes. Requesting appropriate funding.
Sorry.
So we take that into account.
That's good. Yeah. I'd also got around councillor Carrington's point about social media, and then councillor Sands' point about mass media. I mean, are they recommendations from us that we want, that we're asking for the elections team to look into? Or are we saying they'll happen anyway? Councillor Prinsley?
I mean, what we're talking about here is public relations and advertising, isn't it?
Yeah.
And, I mean, I don't know, doesn't council ever commission advertising agencies to help with exactly this sort of problem? Because here we've got a problem of communicating to the mass electorate a significant change that we wish them to act upon.
Thank you.
So I think if you, my broader history of my seven, eight years of working for the House of Commons, there have been times when we have, you know, inflexible back boxes and we had used external companies to hold our communication plans. I think we did some of that in regards to the introduction of I R, individual electronic inspection. So obviously, there are gains around funding, there are certainly things we could do in terms of asking for funding from government for that engagement. So, but yeah, absolutely, we have used...
Thank you. Thank you. The only other point I'd written down was around EU citizens, but I don't think that was actually a recommendation. Oh, you put it out. It's just because I can't read.
So I popped up there. So I sort of thought there's these three things that badged on making sure the communication plans in future include. And the second one of those I put, most acceptable voter ID, including ASR ID and relevant EU passports.
Was it EU passports or EU identity cards?
Or both.
Or both, yeah.
Both, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you. So, yes.
I have the recommendation around thanking the...
I've just put that in the minutes.
You mean thanking the team?
Yeah, thanking the team and recognizing the...
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yes. Yes, that's... Yeah, that's really important and highlight that again. And thanks to you two for coming along today. Really, really pleased with the presentation you've given and so on. So now, we've got recommendations.
Yeah, can I, like, um, so it's probably easier to write this as a, as an extra recommendation somewhere on the screen. But I would say essentially investigate sources of funding to try, to file a formal, demographically balanced participatory democracy, such as citizens' assembly, as part of a future council consultation process. Because the funding element is the bit which gives me concerns about it. And the lack of balancing cheaper models is also a concern to me. And I know there are councils such as Oxford, Good Labour Party, such as Oxford, who have secured funding from external organizations to do so. And I'm not ideologically opposed to them, but I am concerned about the funding personally.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councillor Haines?
I think that's answered the question. The council have discussed important votes eventually, but that's a long time ago, it was a different council. And I think perhaps it maybe wasn't what we wanted to go with five, 10 years ago, when it was. But now it's a different council, I think things have moved on, things have come up in the mainstream, they've proven to work elsewhere. It's not us taking a leap into the unknown, it's us adopting proof of that democracy that has worked and that's supported by that, that may have assisted elsewhere.
I think probably circumstances have changed and we do need to protect democracy. We may be feeling as a group here today. Councillor Galvin?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, we're bringing this forward. It's come up this point because of this. So we've seen that a set of people get de-advantised by this, which is why we're discussing it. This is a response to that. It's an extra, an extra way that we as a council can make sure that people are getting...
On my point, the extent of being engaged with the community.
It's a parallel, it's a parallel structure.
We do, we do, we do. I know we do. I think councillor Sands, you need to be the last person to speak on this, and we really do need to go on to the vote on this. Because otherwise, we're not going to go home.
There's a great bunch of recommendations to all of them, but they strike me as being sort of three groups. One group of recommendations have immediacy to them and can be more... begun to be implemented straight away, like voting voter authority certificate. There's, there's kind of like a lot in place for those already that can simply go forward. And then there's, the third, I'm not sure what the name is, but third group. I mean, the research side of things suggests to me quite a long time scale, which could then end up pushing it so hard up against the next elections that we'd be running out of time to take forward any recommendations of things that the research could reveal. So I think that the priorities, as I said, are all good, but some are have immediacy and some have a longer term implication. I think the middle, I think what they learn there, I suppose. I mean, the investigative sources of funding, I suppose, is the middle sort of thing, because, yeah.
I feel we are time limited and that we should actually look at the recommendations. Councillor Osborne, I know you're desperate to speak. Is it? You want to put one more in? Okay. Yeah, I have got that down, yes. And I'm afraid I forgot to say it. Do we want to? Mm-hmm. Yes, all party leaders. Yes, should we put that in? Write to all party leaders? Parliamentary. I mean... Councillor Patter?
Thank you. So it's just to clarify, the bit that's italicized, is that supposed to be replacing the first recommendation?
I know. The first recommendation's put forward, the second one with the alternative is put forward. So you need to take a vote, so you've got both sets of words in front of you. So if you reject one, you might want to drop the other.
Right, and it's simply because I think when you look at participatory methods, they're very resource intensive and so funding is quite critical to actually seeing that happen.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to go, we're going to go through the set of them, one by one. It's the only way we can do it. So if we go back up to the top, please. So we've got two which are similar, or are looking for the same ends, but actually thinking about funding. Yes.
Should we have a vote on the first one?
Well, I think we should have a vote on the first one. All those in favor of the first one, if you'd like to go for that? Well, that's the commission a trial of participatory democracy methods. The second one is including it, but it's saying, look at sources of funding in order to achieve it.
Amendment to the first one.
Yes, you can. To bring in the other one?
So I take it to the point about the resource. So that's the sources of funding to try and potentially commission. And then we'll try that. And then we'll try that, and then it's the actual theory to go in from the second, italicized version. Then the amendment, basically, so that it'd be acceptable to everyone?
I mean, I'm probably happiest with the one that I dictated, because it's, in my view, it should be done as part of the future council consultation process.
What is a future council?
Well, in my view, it should be around, let's say, a budget process if we're asking about essentially people increasing it beyond the statutory cap, where you have to then have... Because if you, if you want to achieve something difficult, or it would be about a big going carbon neutral. But it's, it's really about, from my perspective, it should be something the council has planned in and using a citizens' assembly as part of that consultation process. So I personally would, I think if you take in all of that, then we're essentially voting on the same motion. So it's all same recommendation. So it's, it's up to you whether you want to try and amend it, which would basically have very, very similar wording and have to vote, so if we just vote on them as they are. Your choice, your recommendation loses.
Can we combine them?
Yeah.
Let's combine them, and then we can go ahead with it. Would that be?
So you're making it much more specific towards a, towards a certain sort of actual process.
I think, I think they are valid. So I've put the, the future council consultation process works best at start the sentence if you're trying to combine them. And then investigate sources of funding for trial, potentially commission participatory democracy methods from citizens' assemblies based on others. There is a change potential, whilst...
But are we, are we adding the demographic, oh, we have a, wait. No, we've not added in the demographic imbalance bit.
Which is important.
The balance of the demographics issue.
Yeah, and I think we're all agreed on that bit, aren't we? So in that case...
Happy to, to delete my one in that case.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. So could we take a vote on that as going forward? Would everybody be agreed that that would be number one of our recommendations? Everyone agreed? Yeah. Thank you very much. Number two, research those in Norwich who may be disenfranchised?
So should we take a vote to see who's against as well, just?
Oh, yes, okay. Yes. Well, let's be demographic. I thought it was, is there anybody against the first one? Councillor Osborne?
Is there anyone who's opposed to any of the recommendations? We could take them on block.
Yeah, on block?
I can't vote, certainly on block.
Can we take them on block? No? No? So is anybody against the first one?
No, that's...
No, that's fine. Go to the second one. All those in favor? All those in favour? Anyone against? Thank you. Third one, ensure that...
On research of those in Norwich who may be disenfranchised, I'll take the reasoning is because I'm thinking about publicing and I think Norwich there, the more communication it has, and if I was honest, first vote on ensure the communication plan for future elections includes and on from there. And I think that everything else is less relevant to the process of ensuring that people democratically participate in the local and general elections. And I feel that the other things are adults that may have financial implications.
We have to remember that we are making recommendations that are going to Cabinet as Stuart... Yes, Leah?
I think there might be a simple answer. All of these potentially have some cost implication. Some of the next rounds, we do sort of plan the election, the communication process, but through all of these, we could have that bit that's under the ERO one about requesting funding available to do so. We could have something that covers all of these that says, wherever possible, Cabinet should request the ERO to seek funding to deliver this.
I think if you do something in addition to that, you add the ERO or RRO, because actually some of the requests are for the RRO as well. So what you need to do is have a, make them aware relevant, because I think that registration is in terms of applications that's on the engagement for the election, that would be the thing. So, I'm sorry, so that's... But I think you'd have a order along them.
Thank you. Councillor... Sorry.
Kendrick.
Kendrick.
And just to commit, if the electoral commission is actually going to undertake research into the effects of the trial deed, so we'll be able to use that in the goal to Norwich to bring the, obviously, the very high professional standard, I'm sure much more questionable than we can manage, and also it could not be paid by us.
Okay, thank you. So, in that case, shall we just leave it in and it will come to Cabinet and you will make the relevant noises, as it were? Okay. So, we are, I think, down to ensure that communications planning. All those in favour?
It's these next three bits which include the promoting bits.
Yeah, we're voting on block for those, yeah?
Yep, are we? Okay. Yeah. And then...
Is there anyone against? No?
No. And then, are we down to ask the ERO? All those in favour? Anyone against? Okay. Thank the ORO and her team. I think we're all in favour, definitely. And to write to all party leaders. Anyone against? Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. And we still have one or two bits and pieces that we need to do, but thank you and I probably shouldn't say this, but I hope latitude is wonderful. And thank you. Do, I'm just jealous.
Does that mean we have to use a latitude report?
Yes, a latitude report is what we expect. So, we need to move on fairly speedily because we're back to a report from Enhosk and I know that councillor Prinsley, you were there. Would you like to give a very brief report?
I can certainly tell you what happened. So, I was pleased to go to the county hall, to the council chamber, I think my first visit there. And I must say, it's very smart. I'm impressed by how it looked. There was a large collection of the great and the good from the Norfolk and Norwich hospitals, the James Patrick Hospital and the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, King's Lynn. There was a representative from the Integrated Care Board and there were a number of councillors representing various districts. There was a councillor from Great Yarmouth, there was a councillor from Norwich, there was me, there was a councillor from King's Lynn and several other county councillors. The agenda was really a hotchpotch of various matters that were discussed. Largely, the councillors wished to question the people running the three acute trusts about what was going on, particularly with the waiting lists. There were questions about what was happening with the IT developments in the hospital, in particular the introduction of the electronic patient records. There were a lot of questions about the waits, particularly the waits for outpatient treatment and the waits for surgical treatments. The point was made that the extremely long waits have reduced, but just the very long waits have increased significantly. So the total number of people waiting has gone up, but it is true that the number of people waiting an extraordinarily long amount of time has somewhat reduced. I particularly asked some questions about how the hospitals were integrating with each other. As you know, the ICB stands for the Integrated Care Board and the idea is that there will be integrated services across the trusts, leading to single points of referral, single clinical teams and single clinical waiting lists, which of course have great advantages of efficiency. Now, there are long delays with getting this organised. In particular, there are long delays with the introduction of the electronic patient records, which will allow the hospitals to meaningfully talk to each other. I mean, I have a job at both the James Patrick Hospital and the Norfolk Norwich Hospital and if I see a patient at the James Patrick Hospital that I wish to treat at the Norfolk Norwich Hospital for one reason or another, then that's an extremely difficult thing to do. The IT systems don't talk to each other, the X-ray systems don't talk to each other and we really struggle. There was then a long discussion about staffing in the hospitals, in particular the problem of the retention of the nurses. And I then asked a question about the parking situation in the hospitals. The parking situation in the hospital for the staff is really difficult. And one of the principal reasons that we lose staff is because it's difficult for them to actually get to the hospital and park their car. And I think that caused all of the hospital executives there to pause for thought. I felt that was really quite a useful question to ask in that form. The second part of the meeting was all about an inquiry into the Norfolk Eating Disorders Service and there were some representatives of that service who gave an account of what was happening. And that's a service which is in some transition and has itself been fairly stressed. What else can I say? Oh, I would like to say that I think the name of the, I think it's a terrible name, the Norfolk Health and Overview and Scrutiny Committee needs a new name. So I'm thinking about a new name and we'll talk about that at the next meeting. The other thing is, if people would like a written report of what goes on there, that's something that I could produce, but the minutes, I think, are available for us to see if we wish to.
Thank you very much. I think that's really sort of full report and I can see that councillor Osborne has a question.
Yes, I think on the eating disorders topic, actually, because I was in motion, I didn't get to cancel it, so I'll ask you that at breakfast, but to Enhosk, I'm not remiss, asking about the acronyms that eating disorders, there's some terrible ones there. But a few questions, I think, Enhosk could look at, in QTR, eating disorders, which are regular, like GCS, eating disorders, like these needs, like this, that's being consistently applied, wait times for, to people for inpatient events and similarly for adults. I don't think you measure wait times for adults, but it would be really good to, that can be measured. Treatment pathways for different presentations of eating disorders, so not just the ones that are commonly known, anorexia and bulimia, but also eating disorder and hospice and particularly autism, which is on the rise now. I've got more points I'd send to you, I think if you are able, as a hospital representative, to request that those come back again in the future.
Would you like to explain exactly what you used?
Very good. The best way is, I've specified eating disorder, so it's kind of eating disorders, generally fits into the strict diagnostic criteria. Update is avoid restrictive food intake disorder, particularly associated with autism and it's generally the rise of obesity, particularly as it's obvious.
Thank you. Would you like to come back on that?
No, I'm very happy to relay any questions. I mean, one of the interesting things was, I found that almost all of the people in the room who were involved in the health service were people personally known to me through various other iterations in their careers, including the woman in charge of the Eating Disorders Service, who used to be the service manager in my department. So we have a good route into asking those to question.
So, your final question was also, how Mary Mason's, the decision on those.
Thank you very much. So moving on to item, are there any other questions I should ask? But if not, we'll move to item five. I gather the Community Safety Partnership has not met, so there will be no report from them. I think I'm right in saying that, aren't I? So we then move on.
So, I don't know. I think Norwich, I'm not sure if Norwich actually notifies the members that you have against the chair of that hospital.
Thank you. So we move on to the final thing that we need to look at, which is the scrutiny committee work programme report. And we have some points to make here, I know. So, looking at November, if we go through, looking at November, it's possible that the corporate plan update won't be available at that point and members...
September, you mean? September.
September, yeah, I'm trying to make the year go. It was suggested earlier that maybe the antisocial behaviour topic could come into September. Would that be possible?
We need that with officers, that time scale, so we'd have to have a look and see if that, because it's about the strategy being ready to scrutinise as well.
So would you be able to do that?
Yeah, we'll lies with the officers around the feasibility, definitely.
Yep, thank you. And that would move corporate plan maybe to October? Or will it not be...
Yes, it potentially could go in October. Unfortunately councillor Kendrick's not here because we've essentially just started engagement with Cabinet around the corporate plan and processes and potentially we will be doing consultation in that period, so it's quite nice to get scrutiny, to have a very early insight as part of that process. But what we could do is, as that's starting to come together and sort of the timelines around that agree, it might be, I could ask you to be very kind and just bear with us and jokingly said about using, giving us some latitude about the timing of that meeting. So, because for example, actually, if it works better just to push it a week back because something will be out by then, we might need to do that, but hopefully we'll see that emerging in the next few weeks.
Thank you. There was then a suggestion that in November, the biodiversity topic...
No, I think they won't be ready.
They won't be ready.
Yeah, they would nervous back coming then, so, yeah.
Okay. Because parks and open spaces is going to March, isn't it? So it would leave us with November, as I understand it, without a topic.
Because you've got the retrofitting task and finish group to look at.
There was a suggestion that we need to... So, would the task and finish group be able to report that part? And then start...
Yes, yes. Councillor Osborne, there was a suggestion about the, yeah, do you want to...
In the interest of time of getting it started, I think that it could be constituted as a chance to start off with the summer, especially for draft, or definitely for reference for task and finish groups, agreed by email and then ratified or whatever.
Yeah, it's a present.
That's what it can start already.
Just checking.
Yes, councillor.
We have talked in the past about task and finish groups, you know, getting timing and getting on with them, reporting fast and perhaps this, that's the 23rd of November, if it was put in place, you know, over the summer and do together information, or if you need to be about reporting at that point, taking that slot.
Does that seem possible?
Yeah, and if it's not ready, it might, by that point, it might be the committee says, well, can you provide us some interim report on where we're at at this time, so we can look at how it moves forward?
So interim retrofitting.
23rd of November.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's good, everyone happy with that? And then that leaves us March with parks and open spaces.
And biodiversity.
And biodiversity, not forgetting. Is that okay with everyone?
So, can we move biodiversity up to... Yes, it's just not going to...
They're not going to be ready.
Oh, well, they might be.
But I thought the, of course, diversity outcomes to, and I mean, we can also do pre-scrutiny, presumably, so we could look at what outcomes we...
I think it's also that officer resource in terms of engaging with us in time, that would help.
And it's probably the same team that'll be working with you around retrofitting as well in that window?
Yes. Anybody else want to make a comment on that? Yes, councillor Padda.
Can I make a suggestion for the task and finish interim report? Can that be a very concise snapshot instead of being...
I think what we'd hope is you get a final report, but if you don't get a final report by that point, it'd be a sort of brief interim report on where things are at and how things are progressing.
Okay, councillor Galvin.
Yeah, perhaps just can have a one accepted summary at the beginning, so to have a little information at the beginning. And didn't do it just for... Can I just ask why the parks and open spaces is still...
So, it's a little bit awkward as to whether it was delayed and I think, and with many apologies, there's a bit of miscommunication between officers and portfolio holders down to members at the last meeting. So in essence, I think the officers had tried to say, well, we'll try and get something to you, but actually reality was, they were always going to struggle. We've got relatively new officers just come into that service areas, getting to grips with things, wants to work together to look at future strategy and things. So it was primarily miscommunication, really sorry that happened.
Okay. Does anybody want to make any other points? And I think we've come to the end of our programme, as it were, and thank you very much, everyone, for your questions and comments and to you two. Thank you.